I'd like to open the February meeting of the Suffolk City School Board and ask Mr. Copeland to offer the Pledge of Allegiance.
May we stand, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
May I have certification of the closed meeting, please?
Resolution of certification of the closed meeting of February 11th, 2016 pursuant to Section 2.2-3712 of the Code of Virginia, 1950 as amended.
So move.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Public speakers on agenda items: Carol Payton, art teacher. Ms. Payton.
Thank you for letting me have a minute of your time. February is National School Board Appreciation Month, and I'm here representing the art teachers in the city of Suffolk Public Schools, and we just wanted to take a little bit of time to thank you for your support of the arts. I have brought Caitlin Lael Morrison with me this evening to speak to you for just a moment. She is a product of the Suffolk Public Schools, and we have just recently learned that she's been accepted to VCU Art.
I am a senior at Kingsmore High School, and I've been in the arts program since elementary school, all the way up through high school, and it has greatly benefited my life. Through the art program, I've been able to go on various field trips, and through the workshops, I was actually able to create one of my best pieces that went into my portfolio that allowed me to get accepted into VCU. I think the arts program is so beneficial to all the students. It really just offers a release to everyone that participates. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Before she sits down, today is her birthday. Happy Birthday! She came to you on her birthday. And also here with us is her mother, Lisa, who's very proud, I'm sure, and she's a 15-year veteran of art teaching in Suffolk Public Schools, and she's currently a pioneer. My dad always told me, when you find good people, don't forget to say thank you, and we have found good people in you, and we appreciate your support, and we just have created some gift baskets for you with some student-made items and teacher-made items that we want you to be sure and take home with you this evening to remember the arts as you go through your decisions, and we thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Payton.
Thank you, Ms. Payton.
And all the other art teachers in the city, thank you very much. This time we'll have Hunter Turley, the tobacco-free school policy.
Hi, my name is Hunter Turley, and I'm a sophomore at Lakeview High School, and I'm here today as a member of Y Street. As you know, Y Street is a youth volunteer program of the Virginia Foundation for Young Youth that focuses on promoting healthy living in Virginia. This year, we are working on a few campaigns, and I'm here to talk about the 24/7 campaign, helping Virginia schools be tobacco-free 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. I came here two months ago asking you to consider updating our school division's tobacco policy. If you recall, I asked you to remove designated smoking areas, include any school-sponsored or school-related event, whether on or off-site, require consequences for visitors, update your policy to prohibit the possession of tobacco and e-cigarettes, and finally, to update your policy to prohibit the use of electronic cigarettes on school property. Now, I am pleased to say that you have updated your policy and include these things. I am standing here to say thank you. Thank you for showing that you truly care about what youth in our division have to say and what they care about. Thank you for taking the time and effort to respond so quickly and to take action on such an important issue. Finally, I want to thank you for putting the health and safety of your staff, students, and visitors first by doing everything you can to have 100% tobacco-free schools 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. I'm asking all of you to please vote yes to this very important policy. I want you to decide to adopt a new policy, clearly making your schools 100% comprehensively tobacco-free. We have great ways to show our support. First, we provide free tobacco-free signage to all our schools in your division. Second, we will offer our free tobacco-free toolkits to all schools in your division. Third, we will add you to our map of 100% comprehensive divisions on our handouts and website. I am asking you to please accept this offer and say yes to this very great policy. On behalf of Y Street, thank you for taking the time to speak with me, and I hope you would join us by adopting this 100% comprehensive tobacco-free division policy.
I don't know if you're aware, but Senator Miller, the senator from Newport News today, offered a bill in one of the legislative meetings to have all schools, all public schools in Virginia, completely tobacco-free, not only in schools but on the grounds as well, and it passed the initial vote unanimously, so you're on the right track. Thank you very much.
Did he include in his bill e-cigarettes and electronic devices?
Not sure.
Okay, I was curious, because that's still kind of up in the air.
I don't know much about that.
Okay.
Good reports by the superintendent.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. I'm going to call to the podium Beth Ann Bradshaw, our Public Information Officer. Ms. Bradshaw.
Evening. Each month, we share with you and our viewing audience at home some of the exciting things that happen in our schools each and every day, some of the wonderful achievements of both our students and our staff, but tonight, we wanted to make the community aware of two special focuses this month. First, the Virginia School Boards Association has designated the third week in February as School Board Clerk Appreciation Week. So Suffolk Public Schools wanted to publicly recognize and thank Cynthia Chavis, our clerk of the board, and highlight the importance of her position and thank her for her dedication. School Board clerks are appointed by law to fulfill their duties and responsibilities, which are keeping accurate records of meetings and proceedings of the school board, maintaining frequent contact with the public, including parents, employees, and the media on behalf of the school board and the superintendent, joining the school board members to help ensure that students achieve to their highest potential, and providing an invaluable service for school board members and superintendents. So there's a gift for her as well, so we want to say thank you to her. In addition, February is also, as Ms. Payton already mentioned, School Board Member Appreciation Month. So Suffolk Public Schools joins 132 other public school divisions throughout the state to celebrate. Almost 850 elected and appointed school board members will be recognized by their schools and communities for their service and dedication to public education, including each of you, our own seven elected school board members. The theme of this year's celebration, which is turning vision into results, reflects the top priority of local school board members as they advocate for public education with local, state, and federal leaders. In Suffolk, our school board members must develop policies and make tough decisions on complex educational and social issues impacting the entire community. You bear the responsibility for an annual budget of $151 million, for 14,300 students, 2,020 employees, and 20 school buildings and six administrative buildings. I'd like to read to you the Governor's Proclamation of Recognition for School Board Month. Whereas the mission of public schools is to meet the diverse educational needs of all children and to empower them to become competent and productive contributors to a democratic and ever-changing world, and whereas local school board members are committed to children and believe that all children can be successful learners and that the best education is tailored to the individual needs of the child, and whereas local school board members work closely with parents, educational professionals, and other community members to make our educational vision a reality for our students, whereas local school board members are responsible for ensuring the structure that provides a solid foundation for our school system, and whereas local school board members are strong advocates for public education and are responsible for communicating the needs of the school district to the public and vice versa. Now therefore, I, Terrence R. McCullough, do hereby recognize February 2016 as School Board Appreciation Month in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So let's give them a round of applause. There is a gift for each of you that you see in the blue bag in front of you as well. And our final good news report is a little more school-focused. I mean, not that y'all aren't school-focused, but we want to share some exciting use of technology that's happened in our elementary schools in the last few weeks, which allows students to use a virtual reality platform to take field trips to the moon, to the ocean floor, and to ancient Rome, just to name a few. John Littlefield, Director of Technology, will tell you more about the Google Expedition product, and then we also have a video to highlight its use recently at Mac Ben Junior Elementary School, and then we've asked Nicole Duplain, who is a teacher at Elephants Fork Elementary School, who also helped to pilot the project, to wrap up by sharing a few comments about her students and faculty's experience. John?
Good evening. I'd first like to thank Christine Lafferty, who shared a tweet about Google Expeditions with Nicole Duplain from Mac Ben and also Megan Farbaugh with Elephants Fork Elementary. They actually had to apply for this opportunity. So Google has created an opportunity called Google Expeditions. What is Google Expeditions? It takes an old form of a Viewmaster and modernizes it. I'm going to share this with you in just a minute. The students get to be experienced in a virtual reality tour of the pyramids in Egypt, the Great Wall of China, and many, many other places. So what the challenge is, is this product is not real yet. It's an experimental product. There was about 10 to 20 schools across the United States that were able to participate in that. Suffolk had two. That was a huge privilege. They're doing this exploration to find out how this can be used in education. How can this be expanded and used? There's going to be a beta project. I've already talked to Nicole. She's already applied for the beta project, and what the beta will allow is Google's going to provide that equipment to the sites that are selected to be able to bring this into the schools. I think she's put a pretty good story together to make sure we're in there. We also have hundreds, literally hundreds. I already shared a package of these with Dr. Whitney of letters from our students to me, to Google, work that they've done regarding the activity that they had experienced at Elephants Fork, kind of Mac Ben after the meeting, because there's quite a few you'd like to go through. This time, I'm going to start a video, and I'm also going to bring the VR viewer so you guys can actually experience it and sort of get a taste of what the students went for. Bear with me just a minute.
From the computer lab at Mac Ben Junior Elementary, 500 Suffolk students traveled where most school buses can't go. Using a new pilot program from Google, 3D images came alive when Suffolk students put on their Google cardboard viewers. Students took virtual field trips to places like ancient Egypt and the Great Barrier Reef. Their reactions speak for themselves. This technology is being tested in just a few locations in the U.S. At Mac Ben, 20 teachers and their students took the trip of a lifetime. Students experienced firsthand the enormity of the Egyptian pyramids. They hunted for camouflaged insects in a rainforest and swam with whales and sharks. Other students dared to move toward an erupting volcano. Even teachers enjoyed the experience.
You are on the move, dear. Do you see the rover?
Did you find the rover yet?
There he is!
Using Google Expedition, teachers served as tour guides, pacing the trip and pointing out the sites. The teacher tablet was synced with student viewers and provided facts to prompt discussion, making it a rich and shared learning experience. Smiley faces on the teacher tablet show exactly where each student was within the landscape. How does it work? A cellphone with synced images from the teacher tablet was inserted into the Google viewer. With viewers on, 3D images transported the students to amazing destinations.
This actually kind of puts you directly into what you're talking about, where you're going. It kind of puts the kids into the footsteps of the Romans, or like a diver under the sea.
Suffolk teachers selected from 100 destinations to link this experience to the standards of learning. Megan Farabam, a gifted resource teacher at Mac Ben Junior, and Nicole Duplain, a teacher at Elephants Fork Elementary School, acted fast to secure this opportunity for Suffolk students when Google offered the pilot program on Twitter. Students couldn't have been happier with the experience. Suffolk Public Schools has used Google products for years, encouraging students and teachers to use advanced technology from Google at a cost savings to the schools. This virtual reality tour is just one more way the division is using Google for education to enrich classroom experiences.
Thank you for having us tonight. As you're watching, I just wanted to attest to how phenomenal this experience is for our children. Our students in particular don't necessarily have the opportunities to go to many different places, especially outside of our country. We speak on the SOLs for ancient China and ancient Egypt, and it was an awesome experience for our children to see the pyramids and discuss the pyramids. You have a tablet, and you can attest to what they ultimately see. However, you take a step back and you become the facilitator, and they take a hold of their learning. They can actually do the whole 360 view of what they're looking at, and they can make discoveries for each other. So it really lets them take the pilot seat of their learning. And after speaking to many different teachers, one of the particular teachers I spoke to, he's been teaching for 20-plus years, and he'd said he had never seen his students so excited to learn with this opportunity. So it speaks volumes for our students, and we are really blessed to have the opportunity for this to come to our school, and we hope that we will become a beta program so we can extend this with our children and our students.
Had that opportunity to experience it more than what you saw in the video. The children got incredibly excited. I had one student at, I want to say it was Elephants Fork. He was looking through the viewer. He kept taking it off and looking around. He did that like five, six times. And I went over and asked him, I said, "What was wrong?" He says, "I can't see my feet." He was a second grader, and in his mind, when he put it on, he was actually in, they were in Egypt at that time, he thought when he looked down, he should be able to see his feet. It's a very engaging opportunity. Nicole spent a lot of time with the students, had them engaged in this. She was sharing with your fellow teacher. I'd like to share the comments you shared with me earlier.
How many devices do you have in the classroom? Enough for the whole class, or just a...
What Google brought was two sets. There were 30 devices per classroom. Two classrooms going on simultaneously, so you could control tablets, and Nicole could use. Sorry. The teacher could instantly stop the viewing and control the class if she needed to make a comment or refocus their attention, or take a question from a student, as Nicole actually shared with us.
What I did was, I had the tablet, and for example, in our Egypt, you know, we had shown the pyramids, and what you could do is pause it, you know, you saw the smiley faces, where you could see what they were looking at, and I could actually hold the tablet and point to something I wanted them to see, and on their screen, they would see an arrow that would direct them to that object. And I could pause it, and they would have a blank screen to maintain their attention as well. So it would engage them back to what I was doing, so they didn't have ultimate control. However, it really did allow them to learn, and like I said, they had never experienced anything so phenomenal that, like I said, the teachers were like, "I've never seen students so excited to learn," which to me, as a teacher, is, you know, that's the whole point. We want our children to be excited for learning, so it's a great opportunity.
You shared also that the kids are continually talking about this.
Yes, yeah, they're continuously talking about it. I have a Viewmaster. It's not the Google kind, but I do have a Viewmaster, and I can hook on my phone, and I only have one device, so what I have to do is I pass it around to my students, and it's not exactly what Google has, but it's similar opportunity to what it is, and they are always asking, "Can we visit this place with our Google app? Can we do this?" We have had some parents ask about, "Hey, you know, what is this?" Because the students are going home excited about this opportunity and learning. YouTube offers 360 videos that can be incorporated with this device as well, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wonderful.
I will say, this is a perfect example of true integration of technology to enhance teaching and learning. When you hear and see kids excited about places and specific areas that they have to learn based on the SOLs, it's exciting for everyone. I too want to thank the Technology Department and the two schools that were chosen, because again, this was not something that every school had the opportunity to do, but they were chosen, so they're very fortunate. Our kids experienced something that many have not. So thank you, Mr. Littlefield, to your staff, thank you, Mrs. Duplain, and also Mac Ben and Elephants Fork staff as well. The only other thing on the agenda for the superintendent's report is the calendar of special events, and if you'll turn to page 10, you'll note that there's quite a few events listed there. The one that I want to point out will take place on February 23rd. That's the Superintendent's Star Awards reception. That's at 6:00 PM at Creekside. This is where we recognize staff members throughout our division based on them being nominated for a Superintendent's Star Award. And that concludes the superintendent's report.
Dr. Whitney, I'd like to ask all board members to look at the consent agenda and see if anything needs to be taken out and placed into the new business.
I move that we accept the consent agenda.
If board members will please vote.
I'd like to refer to item 21 under the consent agenda to our board members. This is the area where we saw this in the pre-service time of our meeting, that Train will be the company that we will grant the Energy Performers contract to. Is that correct?
That is correct.
And it's something that if you haven't heard about, we'll talk with you about it individually, or you can call us, but it's a good program for us. Helps us do things now that we can pay for later on. Thank Mr. Napier for looking into that. Thank you, Mr. Napier. Unfinished business: Superintendent's proposed financial plan for next year.
Yes. As you know, this is the time of the year, each February, that I present my proposed financial plan, or commonly known as the budget. This was a little different this year, because we are expecting, based on the Governor's budget, we are expecting a little bit more revenue than we've had in most recent years. As we developed this budget, there were three, well, five priorities that I focused on. Three I want to talk about, and then Wendy Forsman is going to come to the podium, actually, she's on her way now, and going to go over in great detail regarding the budget. The three areas that are priorities that I want to mention are staff salaries. As you well know, last year, we did participate in the compensation plan with Evergreen, and they made recommendations, and we were able to fulfill some of those recommendations. Staff salaries is definitely our priority this year for our teachers. We want to maintain the salary scale that was proposed and that we began to implement last year, or for this year, in addition to offering an increase to all other full-time employees as well as part-time employees. Our part-time employees have not had an increase in several years, so we have included that as part of Priority One. Another priority is strategic placement of additional staff. As you'll look at the Governor's budget when Ms. Forsman presents it, you'll see that he has proposed that we receive additional funding for additional positions. Specifically, they may be teaching positions. Some of those teaching positions will help eliminate overcrowding in some of our classrooms, or I shouldn't say overcrowding, let's say large class sizes, as well as some specialty areas specifically in our middle schools as far as having a literacy coach in each of our middle schools. And then the third priority that I wanted to mention or highlight is improving student performance. Obviously, that's what we're about. And you will see, as we go through these next few slides, you'll see particular positions and programs that are included in this budget as far as improving our student performance. We've made some strides last year, but we obviously have a ways to go, and I think the things that we've included in here, based on staff recommendations, based on the data, are things that can assist us in moving to that next level. And now, I'll turn it over to Ms. Forsman, and I think you can find this on page...
11.
Sorry?
11.
11, thank you.
Good evening. As Dr. Whitney said, we're going to talk this evening a little bit about his proposed budget for fiscal '16-17. The total budget, as you can see here on the slide, is $157.5 million, or a 4.1%, 0.1% increase over last year for all funds. The operating fund itself is $137.7 million higher than last year, or 4.6%, whereas the grants fund remains the same. Food services has increased by 9.29%, or $8.1 million.
If I may stop you, Ms. Forsman, I may have confused folks. The page 11 is in your handout from your board book, not the budget book itself. Page 11, you'll see this presentation of the board book. I'm sorry, go ahead.
This next chart depicts the funds, as you can see, that show all the different funds, and that the operating fund is the largest fund that we have, followed by the grants fund and then food services fund. But that's just to let you know that the operating fund is the largest fund. When we look at this chart, it shows the state-mandated major classifications. So as you can see, instruction is 74.45% of our budget. The next one down is 8.15% of our budget, and that's operations and maintenance, followed by food services at 5.16%, transportation at 4.87%, technology at 3.98%, administration and attendance by 2.18%, and then finally, health and psychologists by 1.21%. And that's the breakdown based on the state's mandated classifications. If we look at it a different way, and we look at it by object code, you can see that the majority of our budget is dedicated to people. The compensation for people is 60.82% of all funds, whereas the benefits make up 23.24%. And together, personnel compensation and benefits make up 84.06% of the budget. Operating costs come in at 15.94% of the budget. So what increased? The revenue from the state increased by $4.3 million. The state began a new biennial budget this year, as we all know, and used prevailing costs from the 2013-2014 Annual State Report, as reported by all school divisions to the state. This is the first year, if you'll think about it, that the employee contributions to retirement were required, and many school divisions increased their personnel costs by 5% that year because of the mandated requirement. So they are now using benchmarked prevailing costs that are higher than during the recession. So you can see here that basic aid increased 1.2 million, almost $1.3 million, and the sales tax estimate, based on growth, is increased by almost $1 million, followed by an at-risk add-on of $443,914. The governor proposed increasing the funding for medieval summer school, $365,789. The fringe benefits increased because the rate for retirement increased, so the expense increased, the state's share of that expense increased, so they sent us more revenue for that. The regional special ed tuition for CSEP increased. Again, the cost also increased. There were 12 instructional positions that the governor proposed in December, so those are in here. That's the state's share of prevailing cost for those positions. And then there were some other increases and decreases, and the net of those is about $64,000. In addition, the superintendent's proposed budget asks for an additional local appropriation of $1 million. So the total increase in revenue proposed in the budget is $5.3 million.
If I may, if you go back to that slide, if you'll take a look once again, just to reiterate, so we're expecting an increased revenue... reiterate, so we're expecting an increased revenue of $4.3 million from the state, but we'll be asking the city for an additional $1 million, which again, gives us that total of $5.3 million. Again, this is based on our needs, based on what you have shared with us as being priorities, and staying true to those five priorities that we mentioned, or will be mentioning as we go through this.
If we look at a history of state funds, you can see the increase this year from 2015-'16 to 2016-'17 of the $4.3 million. However, it is important to put this in perspective. If we look at the funding in 2008 and '09, and you look at the funding in 2016-'17, we are still $5 million less funding than we were in 2008-2009 from the state. So we have not recovered from that level from way back in 2008-2009.
And we've done more with less.
Yes. So, we do have more money, and we're appreciative of that more money, but we need to understand that, and put in perspective, we're still not back at 2008-'09 levels by $5 million. For local revenue, you can see that last year, the city gave us the amount that we asked for, and we had received then $53.5 million. The Superintendent's Proposed Budget this year includes an additional request of $1 million above 2015-'16 funding. So in developing this proposed budget, administrators and principals worked together in this past fall to identify areas of need based on the six-year comprehensive plan and the school board goals. Priorities were developed around these documents and data from testing and surveys. This proposed plan reflects changes based on that work. As Dr. Whitney said, Priority One was staff salaries. To that end, the proposed budget includes maintaining the Classification and Compensation Study Teacher Scale that was put in place last year. That cost is $1.3 million. It's approximately a 2% raise among staff on the teacher scale. A step raise for full-time support employees, $657,100, and that's again, approximately a 2% raise. A 1.5% pay increase for most permanent part-time positions, for $175,000. And a completion of the Classification and Compensation Study Phase Two, Part Two, and Phase Four, for $262,148. In Classification Study, if you'll remember, last year, we were able to do Phase One, which would support staff greater than 20% below market, and implementing the teacher scale. Phase Two, Part One, were those support staff who were paid at 19.5% through 10.6% below market. The proposed budget includes Phase Two, Part Two, which is those who are 10% below market in the support staff. And Phase Four is administrators who are greater than 10% below market. And this will complete the compensation portion of that study. Priority Two is improving student performance. The proposed budget includes testing coordinators, moving them from 10 to 11 months, three full-time graduation coaches, four literacy teachers at the middle school, an English specialist, alternative education special education teachers, and two compliance specialists. Further, it includes restoring allocations to schools by 20%. And just to give you perspective, that only puts them at 71% of where they were back in 2008-2009. So by adding that money, we're still only at 71% of what they received back then. It adds additional professional development for Instruction, for purchase services for Instruction, an increase in dues and subscriptions in Instruction, materials and supplies, and additional testing materials, all in Instruction. Authority Three is strategic placement of additional instructional staff, and it includes the 12 new teaching positions as proposed by the Governor. The cost of those positions is $660,000, and they'll be used for things like class size reduction, and then for data-driven instructional support. Priority Four is to address increased costs. Things are more expensive year to year, and we try to move things around to cover those costs. But these costs are above and beyond that, and this is special education, occupational therapy, and physical therapy services, and then a maintenance water treatment contract. So the increase for the two of those is $319,425. And then additional increases for software for locally-developed assessments, and for GPS services for us, for $83,215. Priority Five is complying with state program increases. As you saw with the revenue, there are some things that increased that we now have to increase expenses. One of those is the remedial summer school increase. And this will be used for continuation of LEAP and the redesign of the middle school summer school program, and expanded summer radiation. And then our textbook allotment increased by $488,997, and we'll need to spend that in order to receive the money, because that is based on spending it on textbooks. To recap, the proposed increase in revenue from the state is $4.3 million. The proposed additional local appropriation request is $1 million, for a total of $5.3 million. The proposed increase in expenses include everything here, including the FTE positions. And then this slide as well, with those positions. For a total of 25 positions and $5.3 million.
The textbook allotment is, that is a provision of the state, correct?
Correct.
Well, now, what if we decided to not buy textbooks, but instead to have virtual material? I mean, notepads or the programs that would go with those that would take the place of textbooks?
The definition for textbooks includes electronic versions of textbooks, and we'll pay for those. I think some of the issues have been with some of the vendors to get those textbooks delivered to us in that format that we can put on devices for the kids. So, it does include that, if we wish to do that. It's included in the definition, and we can do that with those funds.
But, I mean, I know that there are electronic versions of textbooks.
Correct.
But what about electronic versions instead of textbooks?
We have considered that in some cases, and in some cases, it's in addition to. So it's an alternative where they can use the electronic version or not. But either/or, the amount here would stay the same, because we match what the state gives us in order to be able to utilize what they provide. But I do think it's something that we've considered looking at moving towards more electronic textbooks. But having to be mindful also that if the textbook is an online version, that when students go home, they have to have access to Internet, and not all of our students do. However, some of them you can download, it doesn't require Internet access.
Well, the problem with what you're saying, though, is that an electronic version of a textbook is still the same textbook, and it's not able to be instantly revised. So, that was the purpose of my question. Because, yes, I mean, a student could not take a textbook home, but there are alternatives. If we had electronic materials that could be instantly revised, then we could also make copies of things for students who could not use them. I mean, there's, but anyway, I was just curious to know whether the state would pay its share should we decide to go that route.
Yes, they will.
Okay. Thank you.
This is my proposed budget. We're open for questions if you have any regarding what's been presented as far as what we have included in this proposal.
I'd like to make a comment. I'd like to remind everybody that the $4.3 million that the state is offering is money that is consistent with what they're going to give to other school systems. It's not, I think not, but it's a percentage of a certain formula. And every school system will get that, so it's not going to be a deferred item for us. We're not going to be able to use that, well, with our salary scale, and it's going to be not in addition to, it'll be included in it. I'd like to thank the city for giving the million dollars to us to finish the salary scale that they proposed last year, under the Greenway Study, is that right?
Evergreen.
Evergreen. I forgot what it was. It's Greenway.
Oh, same.
Evergreen Study. And that will go totally to the teachers and teachers, right?
Well, when you take a look at the page that shows how much it would take to maintain the teacher scale, it's $1.3 million.
Oh, yeah.
So, yes, that money will definitely go towards the teaching, to maintain the teaching salary scale. Yes.
We're committed to making sure the teachers get the raise that they deserve, from the state and from the city as well. Thank you.
And in addition, Ms. Chair, I think all of us heard the Governor yesterday. He recognized the fact that the state still has a long ways to go in a way of increasing the amount of money that we lost, the teachers lost in 2007-8. That he's trying to catch up, and with what has been appropriated. Of course, you know, the General Assembly has to approve what the Governor has proposed, and don't forget that.
Yeah.
It's not a done deal yet, by any means, but we're hoping that it will be approved by the General Assembly. And so, also hoping that the city will also appropriate, 1.3?
One, just one.
One million.
That's in addition.
Because we recognize the fact that we have two new schools to be opened in 2017-2018, and that will, it means that we're going to have to increase revenue in order to proper instructional personnel. So, that's one of the reasons, I think, I can't speak for the Superintendent, but why we, he is asking only for a million this year, because he recognizes the fact that a couple of years from now, there's going to be some additional personnel will have to be funded. Am I right, Ms. Superintendent?
Yes, you are. And I think part of that, when we developed the three-year plan, it assists us to say, let's focus on what those priorities are for Year One, and then Year Two and Year Three. And realizing that in Year Three, we are going to need additional staff to open up the new middle school. So, yes, you're exactly right. It's a matter of prioritizing and asking for what we need in addition to what's proposed to be receiving from the state, if the Governor's budget is passed, as written.
How much questions or suggestions?
I had a question for Ms. Forsman, on allocations for schools.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Would you review that again? You said the allocations that we're proposing in this budget would restore all but 20%, right?
All but 30%.
30%.
It's increased by 20, but we had several years ago taken them down to 50% of the allocation from the previous year. We've gradually tried to bring back as much as we could. This budget brings, increases it by 20%. And what happens is, I went back and looked, in 2008-'09, the allocation for schools was $685,050. So, this is only 71% of that amount of money. So we're restoring them up to 71%.
And so how much would it cost to restore it back to the original at this rate, you say? How much more would we have to have?
About another $200,000.
$200,000. Okay, I was just questioning.
The allocations for the schools, just to be clear, what does that money go? I mean, the principal can decide how that money is spent, but normally, how is that money spent?
It depends on the level of the school. For high schools, they have departments, and so generally, they allocate by department what goes out. And a principal and his staff may decide that one department has a specific need a year, and put extra there with the idea that the next year, something else would happen. So the principals really have control of that money, and use their school improvement plans to make the plans for how that money's going to be spent. At the elementary level, it's a little bit different, because they have art and things like that, and it's not really a department. But they allocate for copies first, and then they allocate out to each individual type of teacher.
So the allocation for each school includes the copies that people make?
The copier clicks, so the click, that's the maintenance contract on the copies. It does include, it's money for paying for that, yes, ma'am. So they pay for those out of that allocation money.
And the paper that it uses to, okay.
That would include art supplies?
guidance.
Musical?
Musical, everything.
Everything. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay.
Any questions for Ms. Forsman? Thank you, Ms. Forsman. We appreciate your input. This is not an action item, this is for information, and if you'll take it back, and if you have any questions, be prepared to ask them at the next meeting. Make suggestions. We'll put it on the next meeting background.
Yes, in March, we'll have the public hearing, and also, we'll probably schedule a special meeting for you to adopt it after the public hearing.
Okay, if you'll look to new business, we have proposed courses. First, 216, 217 for next year.
Yes. If you'll take a look at page 23, you can see there's a memo from our Deputy Superintendent and our Director of Secondary Leadership regarding the specific courses that are listed here. I'll call Mrs. Chavis to the podium. If there are questions specifically about what's being proposed, we'll certainly try and answer those.
As you look at the memo on page 23, requesting action be taken on nine courses for approval, one course pending funding, and as the Superintendent shared during the joint meeting of the City Council and the Board, the three-year plan for middle school included an AVID course, and that's what that pending course is for, depending again on the funding for that course. Two courses are not recommended this time, because we've requested additional information before moving forward with those two courses. Three courses we're requesting to be deleted, and then six courses are some changes based on prerequisites or aligning with our Program of Studies and the state prerequisites. On page 25 in your board book, you can see a complete listing of all high school courses that are offered at a glance. That continues on through page 27. And then on page 28 is a breakdown, giving you a little more specifics of the courses that we are requesting that you take action on. The courses that are being recommended for approval are three CTE courses to include advanced accounting, business management, and medical systems. And two of these courses were replaced, two courses that we're offering be deleted, being low enrollment. For recommended, pending approval, again, pending funding, you can see number 10 there, the AVID course at grade six and seven. The Superintendent spoke to those during the joint council meeting. Then, the next few courses you'll see here are those courses that we're recommending, changes or amendments to, based on prerequisites from the state, aligning with the state, with our Program of Studies. Some of these will include, for instance, number 11, Algebra I, the Superintendent mentioned, the changes that he, the vision for middle schools over the next three years, and one of those is to have Algebra I actually at seventh grade. And so we're beginning to align, and the programs offered here, some of these with that vision of Algebra later in the seventh grade. Three courses for deletion, you can see here, one of those being Dual-Credit Sign Language. Party Camp is no longer offering that course. And so we're proposing that we include that as an honors course. And then the other two courses that I mentioned, further information is needed before we proceed with those.
Party Camp, say why they were deleting the sign language course. It was one of the more popular ones, from what I remember.
Dual enrollment. I'm not sure the reason for the deletion of that through them, but we're going to, we'll recommend that we pick that up as an honors course through Southwood Public Schools.
Ms. Chavis, can you tell me why Summer Reading is being changed to Recommended from Required?
We require Summer Reading on all of our honors-level courses. The teachers have expressed that the general courses, that the response has not been what we had hoped for this summer. So we're making sure that at least all of our honors courses are aligned with that required Summer Reading component.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
The sixth and seventh grade AVID, that is pending funding, right?
Yes, it's actually included in the... Yes, it's actually included in the instructional program that the superintendent mentioned for middle school in the current, in the budget that he's proposing, and so, if that budget moves forward, we will be able to offer these two courses at the middle level.
How much is that supposed to cost if we implement that?
I would have to get that for you. I don't have it with me.
And?
You actually approved that for eighth grade for this year, I think, at the last board meeting, for the current cohort, and so, we're now implementing that for sixth and seventh grade as well.
Can I ask you about the 6630, the design multimedia web technology? Do we have people who are not interested, or?
Yes, that, the enrollment in that course has dropped tremendously. I actually look on page 20, begin on page 30, it takes you through the rationale for any change that we're proposing for any of these courses. And it, for that particular course, we've included the data to show the decrease in enrollment over the last few years. That's actually on page 59 in the back.
Ms. Chavis, what does AVID stand for?
Advancement via Individual Determination. And so, it helps to prepare students for higher level courses when they get to high school and incorporate study guide.
Yeah, I know what it's for, but what does it, what, what is the act?
Advancement via Individual Determination.
Are we looking to do anything with algebra in the lower grades? Move it down? Because from what I'm understanding, with the flow is that we're not, we're to start reaching downward, to challenge students earlier. Are we, have we investigated moving algebra into the third, fourth, and fifth grade areas?
There are actually strands of, of algebra throughout, you know, elementary through high school math. However, when we look at true algebra from the way we know it, we currently offer that in eighth grade and middle school. And so, what we're doing now here is proposing that be introduced in seventh grade for students who are ready for that high level math when they get to middle school, and a bridge math at sixth grade, pre-algebra at sixth grade, to get them ready for algebra in seven, for those who are ready.
The advanced accounting and business management and medical systems, they would all be industrial credited, right?
Yes, industry credentialed, yes, ma'am.
So, that'll work, move us more towards workforce skills.
Yes, ma'am. And you can see on page 30, it's really, Mrs. Best did research to see where the trends in industry are going, and these courses are being recommended based on that.
Most of our industrial recommended courses are taught at Pruden, or are they also taught at the high school level?
Both. The industry credential courses are both in high, in the base school as well as Pruden. And these courses she's recommending would be at the base school.
Questions, board members?
The only other thing, I'd like to call your attention to the superintendent mentioning the budget reading teachers, literacy teachers at middle school, and you will see that's a part of this proposal as well for reading foundations in six through eight.
Okay, if there are any other questions, we're going to have to call for the question on this. This is an action item, so we'll need a recommendation.
May I move for the adoption of the proposals that have instructional proposals?
Second.
That have been presented.
Board members will please vote. Motion carried.
Business ordinance 15 dash, 15 slash 16, 16 dash five, service animals in Suffolk Public Schools, first reading.
And you can see on page 79, that reading is there. If there are any questions regarding it, or if you have other questions prior to the next reading, we'll be more than willing to try and answer those questions.
Questions about service animals and?
Well, are, are there any service animals in Suffolk Public Schools at this time?
That is a good question. I'm going to look to our special ed director. Okay, none currently, okay.
There are, are none at the moment?
Right.
Okay.
There has not been, to my knowledge, right.
There's nothing been called for in the IEP plans. Okay, thank you.
I, I know this is probably not necessary to say, but I, as a person, I have a therapy dog, and I, I want to, you know, to make it clear the difference between a service dog and a therapy dog. These therapy dogs are there just for emotional support of the kids, and they don't have to be allowed. If, in other words, if I want to bring my dog to a school, I have, the principal has to approve it, and also, the teacher has to, you know, make sure that the kids have a right to not be around an animal. They may be allergic to the animal, or they may just decide they don't want to do that. But there is a difference between service dogs and therapy dogs.
Thank you for that clarification. I think it was needed to. Thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Okay, that's an informational item. We'll act on it next board meeting. The ordinance number 15 slash 16 dash six, tobacco-free school for staff and students, first reading.
Yes, and if you'll turn to page 83, you'll see the changes and modifications that we've made with that particular ordinance as written here. If there are any questions, we'll try and answer those as well.
I have a question. This, this proposal here is not really directly related to this, is it?
I think it raised our level of awareness to, to update our policy, yes.
Right, and, and, and I, I see that. I just, the only question that I have is that I'm not familiar with this particular Virginia Foundation for Healthy Youth. I mean, it, I don't know, is it a private org? In other words, when we are changing our policy, it's, it's not directly dependent upon or related to this particular movement, because I just don't know anything about that movement.
No, there, there were some suggestions that they made, but of course, this is your policy, so you all make the final say-so on that.
Right.
But again, it did raise the level of awareness for us to update our tobacco policy.
Exactly, which is a good thing, you know.
They'd even more after the General Assembly.
They may, you're right.
We may have another addition to it, right? Okay, let's see it here. I'm like speakers on non agenda items. Anybody out there would like to speak on non agenda items? This is, this is for the audience, public input for non agenda items at this time. Anybody out there like to speak on any of the non agenda items? Another 30 seconds, if you're interested. Anybody? No, okay, we'll go ahead on. Business by board members, we'll start with Ms. Keeter today.
Thank you. I was, had a question as we were talking about the curriculum right then. How do we communicate with parents, letting them know that we've dropped some courses and we've added some to it?
When we, when, when students begin to schedule, they receive a program of studies, and what they generally do in there is have every course that we actually offer. If a student is a current student, and they're familiar with the course, and they ask for that course, that would be the time that they say it's not available, or whatever the case may be, depending on what it is they're looking for. But I think the program of studies is really the, the way that parents know exactly which courses we offer and those that we don't. What we have found is, obviously, those that we end up deleting because of low enrollment, there's usually not a lot of questions about it. If someone is of interest, it is of interest for someone, generally, we'll, we'll, and we offer it, but it's low enrollment, and generally, we may offer it, but it doesn't make because of the low numbers, we will let them know and ask them to have a backup plan or backup course in case it doesn't make. There is a number that we use for a course to take as far as making sure that it does make, but generally, it's during the, the course of studies that we share that information, program of studies, rather.
Thank you. That was my only question I had right then. I want to say we had a good meeting yesterday in Richmond, listening to the many speakers that were there. They were either predictions or hopeful kinds of presentations made. And of course, we had some of our people who will probably tell us about their visits to meet some of our elected officials. It was a great meeting, I mean, a good meeting, very clear by the mayor, by the governor, as to how we look at our budget and how he plans to entice the House to vote on his budget. So, it was great. So, we ask that you, as you meet many of our elected officials, remind them that we need this money, and it's going to be great for education. So, please do that for us. Thank you.
Thank you. First, I'd like to compliment the instructional team. On January 27th, there was an apparent engagement workshop that I attended at Kings Fork Middle School, and the topic was understanding the ABCs of the SOLs, and our instructional supervisors and their staff did an excellent job. You know, it would have been nice that there have been more parents in attendance, and hopefully, we'll look at ways of getting more people to attend, because you could tell that a lot of time went into planning, and I just want to compliment them. As your representative to the Suffolk Education Foundation, I would like to remind everybody that on Tuesday, March 1st, the Education Foundation is celebrating its second annual masquerade gala, and it's not only a celebration of the arts in Suffolk Public Schools, it's also a way to give some additional funding to the arts through the proceeds, through the gala. If anyone's interested, tickets are $35. They will be on sale through the end of the month, and if anybody needs to buy a ticket, if they contact me, I'll certainly make sure that the Education Foundation gets your name and information. I was one of the members that stayed up in Richmond today. We were at the Virginia School Board Association Capitol Conference yesterday, and today was an, an opportunity for us to advocate by meeting with members of the General Assembly. We met with several delegates. I think we met with all the delegates from, that represent Suffolk, and we did offer an opportunity to meet with Senator Miller as well, as well as delegates from other areas who are on the House and Senate Education Committee. It was enlightening for them because we came prepared, and we were able to clarify some information that they may not have had, or correct some misunderstandings. So, I, I do encourage everyone to, you know, contact your, your legislators and express your opinion, particularly on the governor's budget, and of particular concern is the charter school amendment that is probably coming up for vote in the next, either tomorrow or Monday. Thank you.
I want to say something before I forget, and I, Hunter, thank you so much for being such a wonderful example of what we've done for schools. You are aware, you think critically, and you're advocating for your school system. I love to cheerlead for our students and to say what a great job people are doing to our teachers who are doing some wonderful things, the art teacher who had to leave, and also, our elementary teacher who did the, with Mr. Littlefield, with the virtual presentation. Those are the kinds of things that really get me excited about talking positively about Suffolk Public Schools. I had the opportunity, along with Mr. Mitnick and Dr. DeBransky, to meet with some of our legislators today at the General Assembly, also reminding them of our funding needs and reminding them not to divert public dollars to private entities. We have done a great job in Huntsville, in Suffolk Public Schools, and I like the fact that people have an option to do what they would like to do. I have no problems with that, but if they choose to do what they want to do with their children, then indeed, they need to bear the burden of their choices. We need the funds that we need for Suffolk Public Schools, and we're doing a great job with those funds. So, I just want you to know, we talk to them, and we want you to talk to your elected representatives to let them know that you support the public school system. We're doing a great job, and I'd just like to applaud you for doing that. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Brown.
Okay, the governor said something yesterday that prompted me to reach out to the teachers and the parents about something. He, he asked us, what did we think was a school? And typically, those of my age and some older, some younger, would say that a school is a big building divided up into different sections. Usually, it has 30 desks facing forward, teacher has a desk. But we're building a new elementary school, and we're building a new middle school. And I would like to appeal to all the teachers out there and any parents who may be listening as well, to help us with ideas for making these two schools a school of the 20th century. Because as you have said, with the virtual learning and, and the, what do you, you know, the Google Viewmaster, I mean, does that type of study, for example, can you have 30 desks facing forward? Is that the best environment for our kids? Or can you imagine something different for our new schools that would be more applicable to the type of learning that should be taking place in this new century? And I, I would hope that if you have any ideas, that you put those ideas forward to us in the next year or so, and tell all of your friends and all the parents that you know too, because there are so many ideas out there that can make these two, two new schools truly modern schools. Thank you.
Ditto to everything everyone else has said. The meeting in Richmond was outstanding. There are over 300 education bills out there, and I really hope that the public looks at some of those and realizes the importance of making your views known, because it's very important, right? We're at a crucial time in public education. Virginia, we need to improve teacher salaries, we need to do so many things, and we need to move forward to a more 21st century goals that will help our students be able to meet the demands of the future. And I think this is a crucial time, and some of our, unfortunately, some of our people in Richmond do not understand those things. Mr. Hopland's laughing over here, but.
He's agreeing with you.
He's agreeing. But we want to reach out to those people, and the public needs to be aware of some of these things, so educate yourself. Couple of other things, we had a wonderful meeting with the city recently, and I want to commend the mayor and the city council for that collaborative meeting that was very, I think, very beneficial, and I think we're moving in the right direction, and I'm glad that they allowed us to share that vision, and I hope they will continue to support us. We got a lot of positive feedback from the council, and we hope we will continue in that way as we move forward to increase and to make our vision better for education here in the city of Suffolk. And it is School Board Clerk Appreciation Week next week, and as Beth Ann said, Ms. Chavis is a very good clerk, and she tries to keep all of us on our toes. She's very good reminding us of our appointed places that we need to keep up with, all of our meetings and so forth, and she appears on our doorstep sometime in the middle of the night, you know, bringing us a bundle of school board materials, and sometimes, when we get up at the crack of dawn, right, Mr. Mitnick, we find a lot of things on our doorstep. But we do appreciate, Ms. Chavis, all the hard work you do, and continue to keep us on our toes.
I was concerned when Ms. Barron pointed out about the, some of the people up in Richmond probably not aware of what the responsibility we have down here in education. But I was, because. But I was concerned about the fact when the governor pointed out that Virginia is a wealthy state, but is not appropriating funds for education on the basis of its wealth. So that's what I was concerned about, in that he is concerned about public education, and that the legislators need to be aware of public education, and that, you know, are, I'm afraid, a few of them anyway, more concerned about appropriating dollars the other way. And I agree with Mrs. Dr. Judy over there, that that's their choice for what they do with their children. But public education is very important. And also, I also like to piggyback on the fact that the meeting with the city council members, I thought, was impressive. And, and we are looking forward to continue to work with them. And I'm personally optimistic that they are going to be an educational council. They're not gonna talk their talk, but they're gonna walk their walk, and that's very important. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Copeland. I too, visited with several of the senators and congressmen yesterday, and the one thing I made sure they were aware of, that Virginia is probably ranked 10th in the nation in, in the schools achievement area, I mean, SOL tests and graduates going to college, but 40th in the nation in its ability to pay public, for public schools. So it's a big gap there that I'd say needs to be closed so that we can be further rewarded for our efforts. What bothers me a little bit, I think, is that Virginia schools have done so well with so little that they think they can continue that, and it's not the case. And also, we talked with them about the money that was supposed to have gone to the educational department from the lottery. And it was, I think, four or five years ago, the monies were shifted from all the lottery benefits to education, but that's not, in addition to the other monies, that was a base, that was a base instead of an addition to the monies that we were receiving. So you know, so we're getting basically, except for this year, we're getting basically the same monies we received 15 or 20 years ago. And there was no addition to that amount, so everybody knows that. Is that right?
Yeah, they, they gave with one hand and took with another. So they used the lottery money, and they gave us the lottery money, but they took an equivalent amount from the general fund, and, I mean, from the education funds, and put it in the general funds or whoever knows what funds. But it didn't, it, it wasn't, it didn't end up being the way it was intended to be when they put their lottery.
And what Ms. Bouchard and Mr. Copeland alluded to earlier, that our congressmen and representatives know a lot about what they're talking about, but they don't know as much about education as you think they should know. And it's up to us to educate them as to what we want. And the public needs to be aware of this, and also be not afraid to call them, give them their two cents worth. They, they get a little bit of information, and they want to run with it, but we need to make sure they're well informed in what they're doing, and we are. We, we call them and we stay with them, but we need the public out there to go ahead, support our efforts as far as they're financially supporting public education in a correct manner.
One other point, Mr. Chair, that the state has been not coming up with its fair funding, that it has been putting a lot of, of that responsibility on the local governments, and that education is a state function, not a local function. So we need to, as Dr. DeBransky said, we need to inform our representatives that we need some action from you. We just don't need to see you in election time, and you talk about education, we talking about you doing something about it.
I'd like to thank one of our local realtors, Hubie Young, has called me about two of our teachers being recognized, and we will recognize them next month in our staff meeting. And, look, we, we, we can't find out who all our teachers are doing out there in the community when we don't, we don't get certain information. So if you know anybody out there that deserves recognition, please let us know so that we can recognize them here in front of us, thank them for their job, because we know our teachers are out there doing the right thing and, and making sure the kids are getting what they deserve. We know we have a great staff of teachers and curriculum specialists here. We feel good about our direction. We're going in the right direction. We're going upward, and we're going upward fast. I want everybody to be on that train with us. Dr. Whitney, do you have anything you'd like? Okay, there's nothing before the board, we'll go ahead and, ready?
Personnel?
Yeah, the personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the personnel report.
Board, board members will please vote.
Mr. Chair, I move that we adopt the people personnel report as presented.
Second.
Board members will please vote.
Before adjourning the meeting, I'd like the board members to look at the informational items and see if anything needs to be adjusted, changed, or brought up at this time. Board members, take a minute to look at the informational items, please. Hearing none, no concerns, I will adjourn the meeting in one second. I'd like to encourage all the parents and students out there who have, have a notion to support your schools, to call your representatives and your senators, your senators and your house representatives. Now, these bills that are coming before us in this General Assembly session are important, and we need to make sure that we're getting all the money that we need to carry on. So please, call and support your local school district and your budget concerns. Thank you very much. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.